Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held June 18th, 2012. Item B is approve the minutes of the special work study session held May 5th, 2012. Item C is accept the minutes of the planning commission held May 8th, 2012. Item D is reappointment of Kent Graham, Robert McDonald, and Don Snow to the planning commission to serve a three-year term. Item E is appoint Nicholas Kyle Shiplett, Sheila Tillery, and Leslie Van Bereswick to the CDBG Advisory Committee. Item F is approve resolution number 74312 adopting the schedule of fees and changes or charges, excuse me, amending the cemetery lot, graves taking fees, and the monument and marker setting fees effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, repealed, and repealing prior inconsistent fees. Item G is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2011-2012 in the amount of $1,828,432.71. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? Any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider zoning application number 888 located in the southeast quarter of section 14, township 10 north, range 3 west, being south of Main Street and west of Eastern Avenue from R2 Family Dwelling District, C1 Office District, to C3 General Commercial District, and approve ordinance number 72012, application by NOK Investments LLC, Jason Nedro, Planning Commission approved this item 8-0.
Mayor and council, this property is located south of Main Street along the west side of Eastern Avenue. It is currently developed as a single-family residence on three acres. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the property with general commercial uses, and he must obtain a C3 zoning in order to accommodate his plans. Public Water is located along Southeastern Avenue, and Public Sewer is available on the Northwest Property Line. Access is provided by Eastern Avenue. The property does not have access to the residential street in the rear of the property, Woods Drive, that's located in the Armstrong addition, and there are no curb cuts will be granted for commercial properties to that local residential street in the future. There is no flood plain located on the property, but there is a significant drainage channel on the west boundary line that does abut Woods Drive. It releases on the south end of the property. This drainage channel does handle a significant amount of stormwater in that basin, and the city will require a separate drainage easement to ensure the maintenance and functionality of that drainage channel. In addition, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant must provide some studies to determine whether or not detention will be required on that site. This property is currently designated in the Moore Vision 2020 as medium commercial along Eastern Avenue with a low-density residential strip on the west side of the property abutting Woods Avenue or Woods Drive. Due to the existing drainage channel on the site, the commercial development will be limited to not include the property that is abutting Woods Avenue. Therefore, staff at this time did not believe that amendment to the comprehensive plan was necessary. This application is for infill development. It does meet all the comprehensive plans guidelines for commercial development that abuts a residential neighborhood, which is mainly providing for buffering for the surrounding neighborhoods, and that buffer is in the form of the existing drainage channel that will provide a natural buffer with the trees to remain. Staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Do you know what they're going to put there?
I do not. The applicant is here, and he could probably answer those questions.
Okay, it's a business. Do you mind telling us, or?
At this point, we don't know for sure. We've talked about a strip center. We've talked about many stories, which we know we'd have to go back through because it's special ordinance, but we haven't, we haven't made any determination on that yet.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That piece of property just looks like commercial property.
It does.
Yeah, it has, it has for some time.
Yeah, kind of drove by it with that. I agree.
Only problem I have, I would be real concerned about any more storage units coming to town, though.
Yeah, I think we agree on that.
If there's anything in any possible way you could not do storage units, we have a lot of them. Anything other than that would be great.
That would have to come back to us, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I agree. I make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone opposed to this? No one signed up to speak against it? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider resolution number 74212 adopting the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan, and submitting the same to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mayor and council, every year, head does require us to develop an annual action plan as to what we are going to spend our CDBG funds on for that upcoming year. City staff hosted two public meetings in order to get comments from the public as to what they would like to see happen with these funds. In addition, the Moore CDBG Advisory Committee met an additional two times in order to discuss the needs of the community and allocate that funding, and I should note that all of the meetings were open to the public, and we did have quite a bit of turnout from our residents compared to what we normally have, so it was great to see the citizen participation in this round. For the 2012-2013 CBG program year, the City of Moore is anticipating a total of $277,386. Additionally, we will be able to reallocate funding from the 2010 fiscal year that, but I should say the CDBG year, that were never spent, and those funds are $47,823. So when you add all that together, it really gives us a total this year to spend $325,209. We are able to split these, this funding up into administration, which is at $55,477. Public services, which is capped at a 15 percent amount of the original allocation, so that makes it 41,607. The remainder will be able to be spent on the public infrastructure. So we were able to spend about approximately $41,000 in public service projects. We did receive requests for over $70,000, so we had a lot of tough decisions to make this year that we haven't been able to, or haven't had to make in the past, and on page 88 of your agenda, I've listed all of the entities that did apply for the funding and who got funded and unfortunately who didn't. But just to give you a real brief rundown of who did get funded and for what, Aging Services was funded for home delivery meals to senior citizens. Bethesda was awarded funding for counseling services for abused children. Moore Youth and Family Services was awarded funding for prevention services for at-risk youth. Moore Alcohol and Drug Center was awarded for counseling for first-time offending youth, and the Moore Public Schools Foundation was awarded for home life kits for low to moderate income youth. And again, on page 88 is a listing of the applicant, applications that were not funded. For public infrastructure projects, we will be spending $228,125 on a senior center expansion project. You may know that the senior center is operating at capacity currently, and we do need to expand it if we ever want to add in additional activities for the seniors. So with this funding available, we will have approximately 2,000 square foot expansion to the east of the center, which is where the, I call it the new parking lot is, to the east. So that will provide services for our senior citizens. The 2010 census estimates those at 4,733 senior citizens. So that is the program for 2012 in a nutshell. Of course, we had the bigger document available for your review online, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
No question, but I've had an opportunity to serve that committee with some other great folks from our community, and just appreciate them volunteering their time to come up and meet, and like Elizabeth said, there was a lot of interest in those funds, not enough to go around, but I think we made some good decisions, and it's going to benefit.
Yeah, excellent job.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve it.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No, would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider prioritizing selected roadway improvement projects for implementation.
Mayor and council, now that we are finishing up on our 2008 GeoBond projects, we are beginning the engineering for the last project that we had on our list for that, it's now time for us to look at our future projects. We do need a prioritized list in order to pursue funding for these individual projects. Staff did identify five segments in need of improvements. Page 92 of your packet does have what segments those are and the details about the segments, and really what our vision is for these projects, of course, that's without any engineering being done or any cost estimates being done. And on page 93 does have a map of our past projects that were funded with the 2008 GeoBonds and our list of five new proposed projects, and you can see that it does address the southeast portion of town that is east of the interstate and south of 19th Street, and we haven't had any projects in that area of town for quite some time. So the city's projects that we would like, or staffs that we would like to propose to you would be to, number one, reconstruct Telephone Road between Southwest 4th and 5th; number two, widen Southwest 34th Street between Telephone Road and Santa Fe Avenue; number three, widen South Broadway Avenue from 19th Street to Eastern Avenue; and number four would be a segment of that same project, which is widening it from Eastern Avenue all the way down to 34th Street. And the final project we would like to propose is widen Northeast 27th Street between Eastern Avenue and Bryant Avenue. Again, we have several different pockets of money we can pull from, but for us really to move much further, we need to get an idea of what the council would like to see happen as far as roadway projects for the next few years.
Okay, where did, in line, I know you've got the Santa Fe Avenue to Telephone on South 34th, but did you have it above or below the one on Northeast 12th Street between Eastern and Bryant?
Well, we would propose that Southwest 34th Street between Telephone and Santa Fe would be our second project.
Page 91 has them listed.
Yes.
In order of the ones that we.
I was looking on the map, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I might be.
On page 93.
Page 91, and it has the listing of the ones that the staff is recommending, and in the order of priority.
Did you, did you do it based on the road or by traffic count?
Well, we did, we took into consideration both of those items. Of course, Telephone, Telephone Road, which is number one of our list, between 4th and 5th Street, is currently a two-lane arterial roadway. It is in terrible shape. It's concrete, it's busted up, broken up, it's pretty awful. And that we proposed is to reconstruct probably as a two-lane, of course, you know, we don't have, done any engineering on this, and that would be what we would recommend as the first project because it is in such terrible shape. But you will note that we don't have any current traffic count figures for that, so we don't know how much it has grown. We can assume it's grown simply because of the growth in the city. But then the other projects really are going based on the need on the average daily traffic count growth. So the number two project of Southwest 34th, excuse me, Southwest 34th Street, that does have an annual growth rate of 7 percent, although we do know that that will be increasing quite a bit because we have a neighborhood under construction currently. And then Eastern Avenue, again, has a lot of growth in that area. Broadway, I'm sorry, South Broadway has a lot of growth in that area. The only one that did not show any growth was the Northeast 27th Street, but that is the very last segment of 27th Street that is just two-lane, and the entire street through the Moore is four-lane.
You guys want to make any changes?
I think it looks good.
I thought they were great projects.
Yeah, they're all, they're all good. Okay.
Make a, do we need to make a motion on this then, I guess, or?
That'd be great.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the item as it is.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider resolution number 74412 updating the Alternative Fuel Vehicle Transition Plan and submitting the same to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, State Energy Office for the 2012 Energy Efficiency Grants.
Mayor and council, I would request this item be tabled for this meeting. I'll bring it back, back next meeting when I have some more information about the costs involved.
Okay.
Make a motion to table this item.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other, I guess, will be in discussion. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item is tabled till the next meeting. Item number seven is consider ordinance number 72112 amending section 701 and 702 of Part 8, Chapter 7, Health and Nuisances Code of the City of Moore to establish regulations prohibiting smoking in the city-owned public parks, prohibiting, oh, excuse me, providing for repealer and providing for severability.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, this ordinance is an ordinance that a lot of communities are adopting from the east coast to the west coast. As the mayor stated, as he read the agenda item, it would prohibit smoking in our public parks, excluding parking areas, parking areas adjacent to the parks would be exempt from this. This is an ordinance that we modeled, Noble has adopted this, Norman has as well. This mirrors what they've done, and this has been a long time in the works. The Cleveland County Tobacco Freed Coalition has been an advocate of this for some time, and we're in a position where we would obviously bring it to you, we're in favor of it. The reasons for this are obviously, you know, in our parks, we want to model what we feel like are good habits for our youngsters. There's cleanliness issues associated with this, there's litter issues, obviously, and as I mentioned, if somebody needs to smoke, they can on the paved areas. We think that's obviously important in Buck Thomas Park. If you have a youngster out there, you just can't leave him and go to the 7-Eleven and smoke. So we, we realize that, again, this is patterned after what Norman has done. I talked to their parks director today and have had several conversations with him over the last few weeks, and they've had no problems with this. It's complaint-based, it's not a proactive enforcement, it'd be complaint-based that the police would, would act upon this. I have a, an example of some signage that we'll put in our, in our parks. As a part of this, we can kill two birds with one stone. Obviously, the health issue with smoking and what we want to present in our parks. But as you recall, as part of our master plan, one of the issues that, that we needed to address was our signage. There's a lot of signage clutter, there's no uniformity to our signage, and so if this is adopted by, by council, we can receive a grant from the coalition, approximately $7,000. We'd use that money to, to go back and redo our signage in our parks, and again, the sign that you see here is an example of what we would put in our parks. I know tonight, Public Works brought a sanitation truck, and police brought a police cruiser, and all we could muster on such short notice was a sign, but it's, we'll try to do better next time, but, so we would do that throughout our park system as a whole. So we took this to the Parks Board, their recommendation is that you all adopt this with unanimous from them, so I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have. If it's the legalities of it, I would defer to Mr. Brink.
Todd, I believe we, we adopted this a long time ago when the coalition first showed up. They showed up several years ago and asked us to do that, and we went one step further, and we actually banned tobacco in the parks as well. It was all tobacco products, is, is what I remember, but if we can't find an ordinance, we can't find an ordinance.
I, we didn't in our research, and so I don't think that we've done that. I defer that to Randy or Steve to see if there was that history, but I don't think.
I'm pretty sure we've already done it. Robert, you were on House Campaign, I was a long time ago.
I don't remember.
Okay. Why not?
Hey, it's a great idea to, to.
I would like to see it come back as tobacco included, all tobacco products.
Well, we.
Because I, I don't like to go out there and sit and spit.
Well, we could certainly do that, if that's council's desire. The, what we modeled after was communities that, in some communities, it's too strong if you do smokeless tobacco. That, that involves one individual, there's no secondhand issues with that, and so we could do that if that's council's desire. We, we just feel like that based upon what other communities have done here locally that this, because we're presenting, we think this is the best option right now.
When they were, when they were passing the, all the policies, when they were doing the war on drugs and all that, that came down, if you wanted any federal grants, you had to adopt that policy, and I'm pretty sure that's why we did it. We may have adopted the policy and not put it into an ordinance, obviously, but.
Oklahoma City, I think, is working on a similar ordinance. Have you been in communication with it?
Oh, in our research, we, Oklahoma City, the city council passed a resolution about a month, maybe two months ago. Theirs was a little bit stronger, it was, I think, all tobacco, and so I don't know if they did an ordinance necessarily, but I know council did pass a resolution.
I mean, however you guys want to do it, it's okay.
One of the things that I've observed is if you're unable to enforce the law, it's almost, it's worse to have the law, and I appreciate it would be complaint-driven. What, you know, I'll start to come out there and drive around, I guess, and look and see if they can see somebody smoking, and go out there and ask them to put it out, or they arrive a ticket, and if so, what's, what would the fine be? $500, is it 20 bucks?
Up to $100.
Up to $100?
And the way that, the way that other communities have experienced this, if there's issues with smoking, an individual would say something to another individual, and usually it stops so they go to a different area of the park. If it goes beyond that, then they, by ordinance, could call the city, 911, and a police officer would be dispatched, and it would be handled that way, so. But again, I've talked to Norman, and they've had great success with it. There are very few issues associated with it. Some tickets have been issued, but it's not a great many.
I'm good with this ordinance. If we, if we would like to make it stronger at some point, that's terrific, but I appreciate the work you've done, it's come from Parks Recreation, and I agree with it.
I'd hate for them to have to repaint the sign. Maybe we could get some more money if we have to.
You know, it's enforceable, the school system, you can't smoke at football games, and we have sporting events where there's 10,000 people there, and they get tickets, you know, you walk on campus anywhere, you're smoking, you get a ticket, it doesn't matter how old you are at school. So yeah, you can't smoke on any of our school premises at all, even sporting events, so it's enforceable and it works great.
Well, and one thing that would be incumbent upon us, we'd have to promote it through our website, any brochures that we did, when we do special events, we'd have to let people know, we'd have to do our own homework, signage, obviously, so we'd have to do some proactive things ourselves, so we're not being. So we'd have to do some proactive things ourselves, so we're not being reactive, and that's always best, I think.
Okay. We have a person signed up, Travis Humphrey?
Mayor and council, thank you so much for letting me speak on this. My name is Travis Humphrey. I am the tobacco prevention coordinator for Cleveland County, and I've been working with your Parks and Recs Board and also Parks and Recs Director, Todd Jensen. It's been a great pleasure. And I just wanted to express our support in the tobacco prevention world for this. As mentioned before, setting the example for our youngsters is what we do. We teach our kids at schools about the ill effects of tobacco by word, and this is a way that we teach them by deed and by example, the, the issues of tobacco. Moore, the city of Moore, has done a great job in, in the past. And Mayor, I think you mentioned some previous policies. I know that the Moore, Moore Youth Baseball and Moore Youth Football Associations have both adopted tobacco-free policies, as well as all the schools in the city of Moore have also gone twenty-four seven, meaning no tobacco allowed on campus. So it's really done a phenomenal job in the past, and, and we'd like to see that continue. I wanted to make mention that the, this year, the Cleveland County was ranked number one in health indicators in the state. It's a wonderful rank to be, number one, when it comes to health. Part of that is policies such as this. And part of the also wonderful thing that makes this a great county is that we've had two cities made certified healthy communities, Noble and Norman. And I know that the Moore Community Coalition is looking to apply, in conjunction with the city of Moore, to become a certified healthy community this next year, which does have grant funding if you are made as a certified healthy community. For example, the city of Noble applied for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant as a certified healthy community. They received that funding, and that with some matching funds, they're going to be able to build a skate park to promote physical activity. So there is some grant funding. These, these ordinances passing are not only going to have an effect in terms of the youth, but also for possible future funding for, for projects. And I just want to make mention of that and answer any questions if there are any.
Now, tobacco-free, meaning smokeless, sand, cigarettes, everything, everything tobacco-related?
Yeah, my, my job relates to all tobacco products in all shapes and sizes. And certainly, this is a beginning stage. You were, you were discussing earlier on that you could make this stronger, and that is, that is within your rights to do so, if you'd like. But yes, I, I address all issues related to tobacco. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Terry, did you make a motion?
No, I, I was real close.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I was going to say, I did get a phone call from a citizen that said that they had, they were complaining about the smoking and drinking, actually, at Little River Park. So citizens out there do care about this issue, obviously, and I've never checked, you know, checked the trash room, and I'm sure there's, causes a lot of trash, I'm sure, out there too, I would bet, so.
I would make a motion that we adopt this.
Okay, thanks.
I'll say that.
Thank you. Good. We have a motion and a second. Anybody else? No? Would you call for vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cadner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, at this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item eight is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held June eighteenth, two thousand twelve. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve in the amount of one million, eight hundred, five thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars, sixty-five cents.
Move to approve?
All right, thank you. Second, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any answers or, I mean, any questions on the claims or any changes to the minutes that anybody has? If not, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cadner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number nine is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held June eighteenth, two thousand twelve. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve in the amount of one hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars, sixty-three cents.
Move to approve?
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? Any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cadner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number ten is new business. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. We do have someone's, Daniel Reich? Okay.
The mayor and council members, my name is Sergeant Daniel Reich, Battalion Company Two Seven Infantry, bedroom. And lived in Moore most of my life. As a matter of fact, talks to all, is my sister's father-in-law. Was, pardon. I'm a giant pet lover. Pretty much love every kind of animal there is on the planet, most of all cats. I've got a family of seven, myself, my fiance, and our five kids. The current city ordinance says you can only have four of any specific animal. And I personally understand that the ordinance is there to keep from orders and problems with disease-ridden animals getting out, things like that. On the other hand, citizens such as myself, my cats never go outside. They go to the vet every year. They've seen, they're being seen, taken care of on that level, everything. So I'd like to see if there's any way we could get possibly that raised up so that it makes more sense to be one pet of the type per family member possibly, or something along those lines. Also, as I'm sure everyone here is aware, Moore is heavily military, and I've been made aware of a few different people who've moved here, such as myself, coming back from overseas. And they've got pets, and because of the current law that they have in place, they've had to get rid of beloved family pets. And that, just to me, is completely unjust in all rights. I'd like to see if there's a way the council could possibly amend the current pet limitation law so that if someone moves into town with an animal that is not on the certified okay list already, and they agree to take that animal to a local vet, and the vet says this animal is not a health risk to the community for itself, and won't cause any, cause the, ew, excuse me, won't display any dangers to the public community, then they should be allowed to possibly be grandfathered in so that we don't have to worry about damaging any more of our youth with that issue. In accordance with all of this, I sat down, did some research, and I looked around. And in Ohio, in the state of Illinois, they've got a fostering license for families such as myself that deeply care about animals, and we want to make sure that the horrible issue of pet overpopulation is stemmed. And you go out, pay twenty-five dollars up there, you get a license every year. Someone from the city animal, animal control can come by and actually check on the animals, check your vet records, check their licenses and all of that. And I included that in the little presentation that I put there in place, just to give you a general guideline of what makes sense to me. I don't know if it will be you guys or not, but I'd hate to have to get rid of any of my animals. I mean, they helped me get through some of the worst days of my life. And I just hope maybe you guys can think about it for me.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts? Jason?
I don't know if, if the, Brandon had any time to look at that pigmy goat deal or anything. You know, I, some of these pets and so forth, just because they don't bark or meow, doesn't mean that they're not legitimate thing. So I, I think that somewhere or another, we need to look at this and, and make whatever adaptations we need to in the city code and so forth, because part of being a citizen-friendly community is accommodating pets that, to a reasonable extent. So I, you know, I, probably what he has presented here could be studied, but I certainly am not just prone to make whatever adoptions are possible. I speak for myself.
The way that I wrote it, I wasn't thinking of just me and what I want. That's why I take note of to the actual indications as to what it would take to get a pet license in there. It makes it not just responsibility of the city to actually help with these animals. It makes the, oh, the people who have this pet fostering license responsible. I.e., if they check with their vet and the vet says, hey, this is a hostile environment for the animal, they're going to be, this is going to turn out bad, the vet has every right to come to the city and say, hey, pull this guy's license. And then that person's physically and monetarily responsible for those animals until they are officially transferred into a new home. So it does, it pulls responsibility off of the city and puts it onto the people. So you don't have to worry about people out there abusing their right to having animals at the same time.
And somewhere along the line, I think there's probably a definition of exotic pets, which we don't want to cross that line either. But something, it's, it's kind of like a couple of years ago, there was a big controversy in one of our neighboring cities over a pot-bellied pig, and that was about as harmless as anything could be. But, you know.
Gaila Sessur, our animal control supervisor, is here, and she is doing some research already on the pigmy goat issue. She actually personally, not in the city limits, owns some goats and some other animals, and so she's pretty familiar with those kinds of things. We certainly can kind of take an overarching look at the ordinances with regard to the, those kinds of things, with regard to what Mr. Reich is talking about here, and bring you back some recommendations. Just with the forewarning that probably animal control and dealing with animals is probably the most difficult thing that we deal with in this city. Mr. Reich has seven animals, seven cats, and for him, that's the perfect amount. For his neighbor or someone in, across town somewhere else, one cat may be too many. No matter what number we set it at.
Four, I know, yeah.
Everybody's not going to be satisfied. And frankly, cats is one of the animals that we have the very most difficulty with. We've got a situation going on out now with a situation where there's wild cats in this neighborhood. And there was a story on Channel Nine about it the other day, and we're trapping cats in that neighborhood. And, and, and animals are, are difficult. People love their animals, they love theirs, but they don't love anybody else's.
Yep.
And people with animals don't make good neighbors a lot of times. And so it's very difficult to deal with. And again, we, we will be glad to kind of take an overarching look at the ordinances. I can tell you right now that there's not any city in the metro area, I believe, that allows pigmy goats. That's not to say we shouldn't. It's probably not been an issue in those communities, I don't know. But we'll do that if that's your direction, but, but it will not be a fantasy, and it will not make everybody happy.
And just something to consider, y'all are doing your research, I'm sure you will, and if the person's unable to care for their goat, or they move, they abandon it, then the city's going to have to assume that responsibility. And do you put them in a dog kennel, or do they have to have special housing? I don't know.
There's lots of issues to do with goats, and Gaila was telling me some of it the other day, and I had no, that all those issues were with that kind of, with that kind of an animal.
A lot of communities have actually developed licensing for those specific types of animals so that if an owner does just go and go somewhere, they're, they can be legally held responsible for leaving that animal behind. And even the city has a means by which to recoup its money or go after that person for the animal cruelty, which I personally believe that would be.
Theoretically, we may be able to do that on paper, but enforcement in the world is much more difficult than, than just putting it down on a piece of paper. Again, just comments.
Our homeowners association met last week on an annual meeting, and we spent thirty minutes talking about dog issues. Animals continue to be an issue, and it's just, what might be a perfect scenario for one person, somebody else does the same thing, and he makes everybody on the block upset. So I'm going to be very, I'm going to tell you, everybody right now, I'll be very conservative on this issue, and I am a huge animal lover. But it just, it winds up infringing on everybody else, is where the issue is. So I'm just going to be honest.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate you coming. We have no one else signed up. Did you hear any items from the city council?
I just the one. I just want to say again, I had a complaint from a citizen about smoking and drinking at Little River Park. So I don't know if anyone ever patrols out there much at all or not, but there was a complaint about drinking.
I have just a couple of things. On northeast twelve, maybe northwest, anyways, all construction on Twelfth Street, it seems to be at a standstill.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Duck it up, and, and it hadn't seemed, doesn't seem to be a lot of progress the past couple of weeks. Maybe things are happening, but they're underground, or I don't know. Just got some questions about that. Are we, were we ready to go? Or are we waiting for something, or are things happening that we just don't see?
I, I don't get daily reports on it. I was down through there one day last week, and they were working on storm sewer work over there. So again, that's something that's sort of out of sight with people, but stands off this week. But I'll double-check and give you all a progress report by email or whatever.
I got an email today from Dan Jones that said that next Monday, they're going to start working on the intersection there at Twelfth and North Moore.
Okay.
I, I was down through there, and I noticed that there's pretty substantial storm sewer work going on down there.
Yeah, down about where the creek is.
Yeah, and it's, it's basically below the surface, huge, I don't know what you call it.
Seventy-two inch pipe or whatever the, it was.
So.
But, but what people see is, maybe when they're down at that one particular time, there isn't any work going on. And we certainly try to keep our contractors moving on because it just helps us get it open back up again as soon as possible.
Who is contractor on that?
That's A-Tech Paving, I believe that is, A-Tech Paving.
Just a question about, and I talked with you earlier, I think in the week, about it, about the security and background checks that we do for coaches and referees, and we're paying a security company to do that. And I was wondering if, and that's, it was like around three grand. Can the police department do that? Or is there a reason that we haven't? It was page sixty-six, it's.
The background checks for the coaches.
Background checks for coaches and officials.
The individual pays that, the coaches themselves pay for that. And it's, boy, about nineteen dollars. You know, it's, it's a new background check policy that we've gone to. It's a lot more extensive. We've had real good success with it this year, but the individual coaches pay for it.
We, we pay it, and then they, they pay us reimbursed or pay it back to us through their?
Yeah, we, we cut one check to the company, and then the coaches, we deposit their money and finally reimburse it to the city.
All right. But is that something our police department could do?
Well, that's sort of the way the old system was. There was a lot of staff time involved, and frankly, a lot of liability upon the city, police. If we miss somebody, we miss something, and something happens to a coach and a youngster, then we have messed up, and there's a great deal of liability associated with it. So a lot of communities, what they do is they, they farm it out to a third-party contractor, and they handle, if there's a complaint, if somebody's been rejected because of a background check, they handle it and the city's out of it. But we spent, we calculated the hours, we'd spend about two hundred staff hours going through those background checks. All right, thanks.
I had somebody call in reference to their trash not being picked up and indicated that they just didn't get to it that day. Is that, I know, sometimes that happens if you have bad streets or weather, inclement weather.
It was due to the weather. It was the heat-related problem with our trucks is what actually happened. And that particular day, I guess it was Friday's route, they just didn't get finished on.
Okay.
And we dropped the ball there because we didn't typically will notify out through the Code Red system and through Facebook and whatever, the hang on, we'll be there tomorrow. But we dropped the ball on that one, but that was the reason that was, they were having problems that day.
Okay.
I got three or four calls on that.
Yeah.
And it's, it's like so strange, but you know something's happening when you start getting more than one. Usually, one, if the guy slept late.
Right.
Two, probably a problem. When you get four, there's a problem.
We, we almost always, if they don't get to it on their day. We, we almost always, if they don't get to it on their day, we get them the next day. It's almost always that way, so, you, you know, we're gonna get out there and pick it up, uh, for folks.
Um, y'all don't throw anything at me, but, uh, Twin Peaks, is that still happening? Have they issued any, or has the city issued any permits? Somebody had indicated that they were, they saw somebody over there doing some groundwork or surveying.
There's, um.
Has, has the city done any?
A permit been issued for a retail building.
It doesn't appear as if Twin Peaks is part of that. The space is a little too small, but it's a, like retail center with several different spaces, you know?
Sure. It's our understanding that they're not going in that building. Is that's right?
That is correct. If you're talking about the pad site, it's on the front right. Um, to my knowledge, there's no lease agreement with that restaurant and the building owners of that. So, but there, even if there were a lease agreement, we wouldn't know about it prior to. So I just happen to know those people, and I happen to know the, the people that they've been working with, and so neither of those would be that restaurant. But it wouldn't be to say that that restaurant wouldn't, couldn't be under contract or under construction with a lease, but we would never be privy to that lease. Or any lease, for that matter, unless we just happen to know that information or be working with them.
But the permit we've issued is for a retail strip center there.
So they could, we could issue a permit for another retail strip center behind there, and it could have five different bays and available spaces, and it could be any commercial business restaurant. And we would not, we don't approve the, the tenant that would go in there, as long as they're in.
Other than through the zoning process.
As long as there is a C-three commercial tenant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And just one more thing, and I'll be done. But I noticed that over the past couple of meetings, we've talked about some big dollar projects, multimillion-dollar projects, the underpasses and a bridge. And, uh, not that we need to make a decision today, but something for all of us to maybe consider is to maybe begin to compile a list of those projects. And the gentleman that spoke about some of the underpasses indicated that it can take years. Want you to sign to do that, and then you begin the process. It can take years to complete that. And, and maybe instead of waiting till the need is there, uh, that we, and, and maybe you guys already are, and somebody can just share that with me. But we can begin to look at some of those multimillion-dollar projects that are, require a lot of input from a lot of different government sources to make happen. And we can, you know, maybe make a list of things that the people are telling us they want, and, uh, look at that. It's just a statement, not necessarily we need to have any discussion about it, but it's quite for you guys to think about it a little bit.
Okay. I think that's one of the things we do, kind of at our retreats. We, we, we talked about expanding the cemetery, we've talked about the bridge over on Thirty-Fourth Street. We've talked about the underpasses or overpasses on the railroad tracks, and we even talked about putting, uh, crossguards across the railroad tracks where they, they can't honk their horns as quiet as, um, through the city. And, uh, 'cause they, we do have twenty something trains a day that go through, especially about one o'clock in the morning to four o'clock in the morning, they live to honk those horns all the way through. And, uh, they do it for fun. But, uh, that's one of the things we talked about, possibly putting those. Those are quarter of a million dollars each. I, you know, people don't realize when you tell them how much a stoplight costs or whatever, that they cost so much money, and, uh, but they really do. So we kinda keep it in the back of our mind, I think. It's just, we never have that much funding.
Right.
So, but it does, you know, the budget does continue to grow. Money keeps coming in, so at some point, we'll be able to do it.
Yeah, great.
But.
Not the big projects and not with operating dollars.
Right. So we, we've actually, uh, done a couple in the past and got by, but we don't wanna do that again.
Nope, we can't.
Too difficult.
Yeah.
Can't do that again.
Well, something I learned last council meeting, I didn't know that Jason Blair was an expert in pygmy goats, so he is gonna be very beneficial in.
He knows a lot about farm animals.
Look, I've been brushing up lately.
Okay.
Wondered, got this.
Good. I took it last time I missed. So that's when you miss. Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, any items from the city manager or anybody else?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Um, Todd, if you'll come up and just give everybody a rundown on the July fourth, third and fourth activities, just so we'll not get the information out there.
You bet. Uh, tomorrow, we start our July fourth celebration, uh, five to ten. Uh, there'll be a lot of food vendors, eighty or so vendors total, not all food, but vendors of various kinds. Entertainment tomorrow night is Johnny Lee. Uh, on the fourth, uh, it's ten AM to ten PM. Uh, entertainment that night is Bad Monkey, a local band, been very popular in the past, same vendors, obviously, that day. And then, uh, at dark, nine forty-five-ish or so, uh, we'll have a fireworks show, one of the largest, if not the largest, in the state. So a lot of work goes into it, a lot of departments contribute, economic development, police, fire, parks, obviously, so it's a truly team effort. So we look forward to putting it on, and a lot of people go there. Parking is obviously an issue, so, uh, that's something we've dealt with over the past, so we'll do so again this year. So, uh, it's a really neat celebration, great way to celebrate our country's independence, so we look forward to it.
Should be a great, uh, great event this year, so we're excited about that.
And thanks for everybody that's working on that. We appreciate you. Okay.
Just, uh, mention the equipment that you all saw out there, the sanitation truck we just received in the last couple of weeks, I think. That's another one of our CNG trucks, uh, with our goal of, um, switching that entire fleet over to the CNG vehicles over a few years. We've got two additional ones of those coming up in the budget, so, um, and our new seven-eleven at Nineteenth and Eastern, that's a CNG fill station is now open. And then I also found out, uh, last week, I believe, that the renovated Loves at Eighty-Ninth and I-Three-Five will also, also now has a CNG fill station. So we've, we were covered all of a sudden with CNG where we weren't six months ago, or three months ago, or even a month ago, I guess. But, um, um, that's an exciting thing, and that's, uh, saved us a tremendous amount of money, uh, over those diesel, uh, fuel costs, so we're excited about that. The, uh, police vehicle you saw, we've got, uh, how many of them do we have now? All of them? Jerry, the police vehicles, the new vehicles?
New, that's one of them.
So we have all twelve of those now that we've taken delivery of, which our guys will install the equipment and all that on that starting this week. So hopefully, within another month or something like that, we'll see those vehicles out on the road. Those are gonna be the line vehicles, uh, or vehicles that you'll see the, uh, officers in out there. Ford Explorer units, and, uh, I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. I think they look really good. And then we just took delivery of five of the, um, what is that thing called? Ford?
Ford Fusion Hybrid.
Hybrid, Ford Fusion Hybrid vehicles, that we had one out there. And those will be, um, inspectors vehicles, administrative-type vehicles and all. So I'm, I'm really delighted that we're able to, to move further towards, uh, uh, energy efficiency, um, in our vehicle program.
What are the other sanitation trucks coming in? Do you know?
Well, it, uh, it takes several months.
About six months.
Six months or so to get those, once we order them. So we'll order them, I assume, anytime now, and then it'll take several months to get them. That's all I have at this point there.
Okay. Item number eleven is executive session. Section three oh seven, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, considering a deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim filed by Rebecca Jensen as mother and next of kin of deceased Austin Petty against the city of Moore and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item B is discuss, considering a deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding Summit Quality Homes Incorporated and Pepper Mackey Building Company, LLC versus the city of Moore. Case number CJ two zero one two dash one five four L and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item C, discuss, considering a deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding Oklahoma Foreign Auto Sales Incorporated, ETA AL versus the city of Moore. Case number CJ two zero zero eight dash five eight five H and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item D, discuss, considering a deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim filed by Carlos San, Sanbradera for alleged damage from a sewer backup and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary, as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item E, discuss and consider taking action concerning the city manager's evaluation and employment benefits as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash one. Item F is to convene to executive session. Do we have a motion?
Some moves, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. Uh, would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Carrie Kavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?